We have, you know, the one item for discussion and then we have committee updates and department updates, but don't forget that we have a, an agenda meeting following the work session. So what I'd like to do is, you know, we're going to have some extra time. As I'd like to take, we have a pretty long agenda. So in order to reduce the time in the council meeting, if we can go through most, if not all, the agenda items, we can probably go through most of them pretty quickly in an agenda meeting. So I'll ask you to, so Jeff, Mr. Montgomery, and Pat, you've come up in discussion of the Parks and Recreation Module from Tyler Technologies.
Thank you for the time. So I was wanting to find some software that would help us with Parks and Recreation for a lot of different facets. One is the Recreation Center itself for people to be able to sign up online and also make payment online, which we do not currently have that capability. Also with the pool memberships for people to be able to sign up and pay online. Outside of that, I also wanted a way for teams and coaches, what have you, to be able to sign up for field space for practice and/or games. That way I can track who's using our facilities, when they're being used, so that I know when lights need to be available. Also, if we have damage to our facilities, I know who to go back to and call on. But also to help with the whole travel ball scene and baseball and softball. We're having some issues there with teams from out of town coming and using our facilities because they're not locked up. So I'm looking for alternatives to try to get this stuff under control without having to lock our fields up, because I really like the idea of a dad being able to go out there and, or a mom, and throw the ball with their child. I want that to remain, but we do have to get some control over our facilities. So I reached out to Jeff Montgomery to see if he could come up with something. We did a demonstration last week with Tyler Technologies. They seem to have all the capabilities that we need. I also reached out to a lot of our youth league presidents to see if they would want to join the software so that parents can sign up for any youth sport online and make payment online. That way everything is consolidated into one website. So if a parent wants to sign up for youth baseball and use soccer, they can do it all on one site. So that just streamlines everything and makes it everything easy. I think Jeff has found a way that we could potentially pay for this software through the CARE Act dollars if we do it before December is what I'm...
Yes, we'd be completed by December 31st, which will be very tough to do, but I think if we got started, we could probably meet that, meet that deadline.
What is the, what's your certainty level of being able to get that under the CARE Act? And what is the cost of that?
I'm still waiting on the quote to get back from the software. We wanted to find out from, from the council. I think really the issue is, we want to discuss today with the rec leagues signing up through our website, we would be collecting payments. And I'm not sure, I think the issue is, if that is something that we could do is collect payments for these rec leagues and how do we pay it, you know, pay, give them the money once we've collected it. Spoke briefly with Kim about it, and I think she suggested we bring it, bring it to you and see if that's something that we should do or could do.
So basically, the, the online payment would go to the city account, and then the city would basically pay out the youth leagues as a vendor.
We're going to add a user fee for that? I mean, is there going to be a little small something? And we're taking time out of city employees, and we always seem to be shorthanded, and we keep adding more tasks to them. So, I mean, is that something you always suggest? I mean, give it some thought. I mean, I don't have to have an answer tonight, but I just, you know, we do. We, you know, it's especially in the Finance Department and Treasurer's Office, it's little by little that we're doing more and more and more things for, you know, ancillary organizations, I would say. They're city, they're connected to the city, but it's not, it's not a part of their day-to-day task.
And we certainly don't have to include the youth leagues. I just felt like that was, that would maximize the benefit of the software.
I don't know about you, council, I'll let y'all speak for yourself, but I'm still, I'd still just like to know what, what the estimated cost would be. How much is that going to add to our yearly maintenance cost with the Tyler Technologies? We have the Intergov, and we've got some data on that and what the, what the maintenance cost is for that after we pay for it in full. There is a maintenance cost. And then, you know, I'd be curious just to know from the treasurer, you know, what kind of burden that, that might put on, on her. You know, we don't want to wind up having to hire somebody to handle those accounts.
I don't, I don't think, I mean, it's just usually one transaction after all the signups are done. And I'm not sure what, how many rec leagues we have, Pat, but, I mean, I don't expect to be too many transactions. But that's not for me to say.
Well, the conversations that I had with them is, you know, we could set up codes through the system, is to be able to set up codes and have those codes go to a liability account on the city. And as long as it would be twice a month for us to pay or once a month, but not to say that we receive the registration fee today and we're going to pass it on, just to have a systematic, you know, you know, is it the first and the 15th of the month? And then my conversation was, for each season, it may be a six weeks' time period. So if it's baseball, you're going to have six weeks of registration, you know, for each sport. So I think systematically, as long as that, the league is not going to require us to have it, you know, weekly, maybe we can have it twice a month that we do a payment. But I know, this is complicated.
I've tried to keep a straight face, Kim.
So if we can just, as long as on the front end, we're setting it up properly to be able to put liability codes in there for each one, and then if it's twice a month, us to be able to issue a check. And then if it's the six weeks of registration for each season of different balls, recreation, you know, that we can make it work. And I could see from a parent, if you've got somebody that does baseball and soccer, that you have one place that you can go register, you already got your information set up. Well, now I'm going to register them for soccer right now, and then baseball, you know, it's, if you're trying to create something simple for your citizen to go over to versus they're having to figure out, this organization is, that's who I go to for soccer, and then it's a different organization for baseball or football. So, you know, I think that's something to think about.
Pat, does the, does the, does the organization themselves, do they police the residents, you know, the residents and the, you know, the residence requirement to participate in the Fairhope Youth Sports?
They do.
Okay. We don't have to worry about doing that then?
Right.
Council, questions, comments?
I think my only question would just be the, how certain are you, Jeff, that it'll be reimbursed and whether or not you think we can meet that 1231 deadline? I know you said you thought it might be tight.
Yeah, they, they said three to four months implementation. Yeah, I mean, so it's, it'd be cutting it close. We'll have to, we'll have to really push hard to make it. Do we just have to see what the quote comes back with, you know, the quote that they come back with, what the maintenance cost would be, and try to get it on the next council agenda if, if, you know...
Would y'all, Pat and Jeff, would you just, or have Kim do it, just email that to us?
Sure.
Just let us know what that is?
Sure. And just to, just to kind of just think outside the box a little bit, this, Parks and Rec, don't think it's just for the rec center, it could be used for the tennis center as well. You can, they, you, each person that signs up for a membership will get an ID card that'll, that they could take to any location and use. So if you sign up online for the tennis center and rec center, this card will let you have entry to both. And they could further outside the box, you could even use it for like the beach area. So if you're a resident, you could scan your card, get access to the beach. Or if you're a non-resident, you can still have the card, but like you could prepay your beach access. You could even do like a monthly pass or a yearly pass if you wanted to be loaded up on that card. Same with the, the landfill, use that card to prove that you are a resident of the city, and it'll grant you access to the landfill as well. So it could be useful more than just the rec center. Golf course as well, Quill Creek. Get your membership, yearly pass on there as well.
Council, questions?
Yeah, my first thought, I mean, just thinking about it, is registration sounds like a great idea to simplify it, give the people that are joining the leagues an option rather than going to sign up at the, at the park. But the, you know, maybe reserving field space, sounds like more of a burden, I mean, to acquire somebody to get online and...
Well, right now, baseball has a paper sign-up sheet that they hang on a press box every week, and all the coaches go up there and sign their name and what practice slot they want. So that's, that's very dinosaur age way to do things. I think this would, Andy agreed that this would absolutely streamline that process.
Yeah, and it's a, it's a herd at around four o'clock on a Sunday afternoon, trying to get up there and get the, one of the remaining practice times.
And right now, that sign-up sheet is pretty soggy. So you couldn't really sign your name on it if you wanted to.
Yeah, I don't know how the, how the, if you have everybody in the queue at four o'clock waiting to log in and, and sign up too, it's going to be just luck of the draw who gets in first. But I don't know, there's anything you do about that.
I see pros and cons.
What?
I see pros and cons to it. And costs certainly seeing what it is.
Councilman Boone, anything?
Actually, wait, I'm just looking at the money side of that as well. Let's see what it costs, what the benefits will be, what the cost that they have. And the reimbursement of it, if it's totally reimbursed or partial, that type of thing.
Do y'all know if any other municipalities using it?
I do not know. Jeff, do you? Any other local municipalities using it?
I'll check on that. I know there are other municipalities. I'm not sure about locally. I'll check on that.
Maybe get some firsthand feedback from people that have tried it. Just do a Google search. They don't have to be local. It could be anywhere. Just see if they like it. You know, there's probably some data out there from some municipality somewhere that has, you know, put some comments that it really streamlines their processes or...
I do have one question, I guess. With it being a tight schedule, are you waiting to fill out and do the forms or do the, whatever you have to do in the timeframe till we vote on this? Or can you do that now? And if it's not accepted, don't, you know, just, don't finish filling it out or turn it down or do whatever?
Oh, Kim, do you, I don't know what the process is for the CARES Act. And I mean, I know we're just trying to alleviate people coming in the rec center as much as possible, trying to move a lot of processes online. We'll check, I mean, I'm not sure what the process is to get reimbursed. But this, but besides that, I mean, I still, even if we can't, if this doesn't fit the CARES Act, we can't meet it, I think this is something we still do want to pursue no matter what, if we could. But if, if this can be reimbursed...
I guess the question is, what happens if we pursue it and then don't fulfill it? Is it detrimental to us or?
Well, yeah, I think we're on the hook, you know.
Okay.
Like, just like the, you know, Intergov.
I mean, you know, if it wasn't detrimental, you just go ahead and fill it out and get the ball rolling. If it didn't work out, it won't work out. But if it is detrimental, you don't want to do that.
Well, my understanding, and Kim can correct me, is that you won't, you can't get reimbursed until you've actually deployed, finished the project, right?
It's reimbursement. So we have to have this project completed, check, cut by December 31st. And then I would ask for reimbursement from the CARES Act. So that's what we're, that's what you're shooting for. This type of product is meeting those guidelines that we're, you know, we're preventing the virus by having people come into the office, being able to put this stuff out remotely. That's what we're, that's what we're doing is, is trying to prevent. That meets the guidelines. This is a federal grant, so we still have to have, show copies of the contract, show invoice, and copies of the council check. So everything has to be finished by December 31st, which, the conversation I've had with Jeff, we've got two big proj, these will be two big projects of, you know, moving forward to be able to get reimbursed by the CARES Act.
So, and great questions, Kevin. So, Kim, let me ask you then, can we, is it, is it an online application that you fill out for the CARES Act? Or is it, I mean, is it something, is it an application that you can fill out now, and then you send us the information? And if we vote on it at the next meeting, the application can go out the next day? I mean, it'll be completed and ready to go?
It's a reimbursement. So like for the planning and zoning and the building permits, I sent in a scenario of what the software's going to do, and they sent back saying that would be a reimbursable item. You know, I can do the same thing of getting, you know, this is following the very same thing, getting information sent to them. But it's just an email back from them.
Yeah, so that's what Kevin was asking there. So there's no risk, you can ask that question, there's no risk. And then they'll tell you whether or not it's reimbursable.
Yes. They give me the information, and I can send it. It took them, you know, I sent the email. It's almost like they have researched it, came back two days later, and I got an email, and that's what was attached to the building permits that we submitted to y'all last or two weeks ago.
So that sounds like the, the plan right there, to do that and let us know. And then maybe, and we can, you can send that to the whole council, and we can get back with Lisa and say whether or not we want it on the agenda.
Yeah.
And then, you know, if it's a, and you can get a, you know, a straw poll of the council, Lisa can do that. And if it's a, you know, if you feel good about it, you need to accelerate it, then you can, you know, probably take another step, I would think. Just get us that information to start with. That sound good?
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, thanks, Pat. Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, Pat.
All right. Committee updates? Councilman Robinson?
I don't have any.
The tree committee, Jay, are you on the tree committee?
I am.
When do y'all, do y'all have another meeting planned? I had a, I had a call from a citizen, and I wanted to call you last week, and I didn't.
It's quarterly. I'd have to check my calendar to see when the next one is.
Will you just, just shoot me an email or something when you find that out?
I'm happy to.
Thank you. Okay. Councilman Conyers?
I've got several upcoming, Environmental Advisory Board may have a Zoom meeting this month. I think they're still trying to determine that. Library Board is meeting Monday, August 17th is the next meeting. And Historic Preservation will be Wednesday, August the 19th at 9:30. So nothing for a few weeks.
Okay. Councilman Brown?
No updates.
Councilman Boone?
And no updates as well.
Okay. We had an Airport Authority meeting last week, and you've seen a lot going on on the east side, and by way of paving and roads, and a lot of infrastructure there. And the Airport Authority's moving forward with building what they call T hangars, big hangars, and the planes kind of go in opposing one another so that their wings don't touch. And you, it's a little bit more efficient for storage of planes. And they've been seeking deposits. And don't quote me on this number, but I want to say we have something like 15 to 20 deposits in hand of people wanting T hangars or T hangar space. And I think that that list is, is growing every day. There'll be, there'll be a waiting list. The demand is there. There was a lot of talk about some, some private hangars being built down on the southwest corner of the property. And I don't know if that's going to move forward or not, but I'm certain that the Airport Authority's going to be moving forward with this, with building the T hangars on the east side. And what does that mean? That just means that once they start renting those hangars and they get cash flow, just, you know, more money for the Airport Authority, less reliance on the City of Fairhope, what it means for the City of Fairhope. So, and not to mention providing a, a place for people to keep their plane safe out at the airport. That's the only committee update I have. Department heads, I'll start with you, Kim, and some of you people I can't recognize with the mask on. You don't have to take them off, I'll try. You're good. Okay.
And you in the back.
Yeah. Ms. Mazer?
On the right.
Okay. Jill, is that you? That's a, that's a big wide mask. Okay. Pat, anything else from you?
I'll just mention, right now, football is going to go on as scheduled, so our first home game is August the 20th.
That's high school football?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I haven't heard that yet. Great. You say, as scheduled, are they talking about any social distancing?
What they're doing is having the team boxes go from the 10-yard line to the 10-yard line, so the kids will be spaced out on the sidelines. Coaches wear masks. As far as limitations on attendance, that was basically put on the schools to determine if they wanted to do that.
Yeah. Okay.
So that's kind of what we're going to do right now.
Okay. All right. Hunter?
Do you want to speak to the, Intergov is an agenda item in the course.
Well, let's, let's go around. We're going to get to that quickly, but that, no, thank you though. All right.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mike?
One thing I have is one item I'd like to walk on for our discussions at the last council meeting and one of the gas emergency repairs. And hopefully you guys have all that paperwork.
That is for the...
Cathodic protection.
Let's see which one there. Yeah, cathodic, cathodic gas services?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yep, I've got it. And I'll go over that, council. I've got three items requested to be walked on, and I'll cover that in, in the agenda meeting. Probably go over that first.
That's the only other thing other than agenda items I had.
Okay. I'll come back to you on that. All right. Chief Ellis?
Yes, sir.
Jessica? Or is it Jennifer?
Jessica, yeah.
Just kidding, Amy. Richard Johnson?
Yes, and council president, and you and the mayor are already aware of this, but as you know, we are working with the seller of the Clock Corner property to take care of a little environmental issue. We did get today from ADEM the permit approval to proceed. So we will start that work in the evening of Monday, August 3rd, which is a week from the day. We have a very aggressive schedule. We'll hopefully have everything done and put back in place by the conclusion of Wednesday night, so day three. And then hopefully on that Thursday, we'll get the pavers put back down and the landscape put back in. But just to, we're going to get some social media out. But we are going to take the clock down so we don't damage it during this work, and we're going to remove the, the landscaping on that corner to be able to work freely. But that's going to commence weather permitting on Monday evening of August the 3rd. That's all.
And council, there is an item, another agenda item related to that. And I'll be asking you to walk that on. That is a contingency to budget $8,500 for removal and disposal of the hydrocarbons. In other words, if they get to the tanks and they find liquid, which would be old gasoline, or whatever it's broken down into now, this company would come in and they would remove that liquid from the tanks. And that's only if, if necessary.
Yes, sir.
Did I get that right?
Yeah, and we're kind of expecting not to find anything in the tanks. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Richard. Eric?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. You have anything from legal? Marcus?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I leave anybody out? Okay. All right, let's go ahead and go over the agenda. It's pretty lengthy, but I think we can get through it pretty quick. Some of it's pretty straightforward. So council, as mentioned, as items 28, 29, and 30, I'm going to ask you at the beginning of the meeting tonight to amend the agenda, to add these three items. 28 is a request by the Common Sense Campaign to hold a candidate forum on Thursday, August 20th, in the city council chambers. And they're asking us to waive the fees. The, the auditorium is not available next door. And the backup date would be Tuesday, August the 11th. I think that does serve the community a purpose, and I ask you to consider that. Item 29 was the just-mentioned removal and disposal of hydrocarbons if they are in the underground storage tanks. That's an $8,500, a not-to-exceed amount of $8,500. I ask you to consider that. And then the last is what Mr. Allison had mentioned. This is the bids for the cathodic gas services. This is for the gas department, obviously, to allied corrosion. And this would be a total bid proposal of $110,136. Now, Michael, you want to go ahead and give us the details exactly what that consists of? And this is where we were asked to go out and, and get some help with what we needed done in the gas department.
This is one of two bids that we currently have. So the first one came back. This is actually the lower one. So this is to address the shorts from our rectifiers. So the rectifiers are injecting a current onto the gas lines. But if they encounter a short, that prevents the current from going further down the line. So what this is, is basically for two, two-week periods, to have this contractor come in, identify those shorts, dig them up if necessary, or our crews can dig them up, depending on how many we get into, and try to rectify those shorts so that we can go further down the line, see if there's any more shorts on the system. But we can't get the equipment to look for shorts downstream because the currents go into ground right here. At these, we have 11 that we know of. So we're already fixing some of them, but these are the ones that are a little bit trickier to find and fix.
And this is, this is a service that, that our gas department would perform if they weren't so busy right now. Is that correct?
Correct. Correct. This is part of the ongoing, starting in 20, January of '21, or '21, is our crews will be doing all this maintenance on our, on our, using our crews instead of falling behind like we have.
Okay. And I...
The next one will be for the unprotected services, same kind of situation. We need help to get us up to being in compliance.
This is showing that you are taking it out of the Creek Crossings Improvement Budget for 2020. So you're taking it out of budgeted money, so you're not adding it to the budget.
Correct. We're not going to spend all that money for 2020. And then what we did is, Kim and I have talked a couple times, we actually put line items in for fiscal year '21. So we're going to take whatever we need to out of that for fiscal year '20, and then we budgeted for this emergency for '21.
Okay.
So, and that goes for both bids. We'll have another one I'll need to walk on at the next meeting as well.
Okay. Council, any questions on that? Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Thanks. I have number five if I'm here.
Okay. While you're there, you want to go ahead and do number five? That would have been the first one anyway. So yeah, go ahead.
Number five is the rate adjustment for wastewater over the three-year period. And again, we looked at it being 72% funded, so 28% underfunded in our wastewater. This proposal is to bring it up to 100% funding using $2020 over a three-year period. And then there's an adjoining water change that just makes them flow the same as far as the amount of included commodity on the base charges. So you'll see the three changes to wastewater and then a one change to the water, or two changes to water over a two-year period.
Questions, council?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item number six is an ordinance to annex some city property located at 560 South Section Street. I believe, clerk, this is just the maintenance barn?
Correct. The mechanic shop.
We'd like to bring our own city maintenance barn into the city limits?
Correct.
Okay. That sounds probably like a pretty good idea. Well, what will that come in to the city?
It'll be R1.
So we will ultimately need to change the zoning of that? Okay. Because I don't think it's going to be conforming to R1 when it comes in.
I would assume we need to be R12, but we'll look at that. See if there are some exceptions for government functions including city owned, so we can...
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you. Okay. Item number seven is an ordinance of annexation for the people you see listed there. I'm not going to read them out right now. Glynn Subdivision located on Grace Lake Road. Looks like one, two, three, four people wishing to annex into the city. Hunter, would that be you if we have questions about that? It's just a simple petition for annexation, right?
Yes, sir. I don't think, since this is not a conditional annexation, it didn't get the rest of this country to straighten out. So I might have to do a little digging if you have questions.
Okay. And council, I'll just point out, the application, it is R1 zoning as well. Should be pretty straightforward. Okay. Thank you. Item number eight is a resolution the mayor is directed to issue a certificate of election to Corey Martin for the office of place two in the city council. Item nine is a resolution that the mayor is directed to issue a certificate of election to Jimmy Conyers, the lucky dog over here on my right, for place three.
Sorry, yes.
Yeah. All right. Any questions about that?
Not about the agenda items, but about the gentlemen that are listed there. Probably I got some questions about.
That's true. Okay. Item number 10 is a resolution to appoint election officials for Election Day on 25th of August. And for the runoff date, if necessary, you can find all of those people, all of the election officials which have been slated for election on your tab. There's quite a long list there. And there is pay for them as well. Item number 11 is a resolution, City of Fairhope elects to provide tier-one retirement benefits to its tier-two plan members, subject to approval by the Employees Retirement System Board of Control. of Control. This was the discussion had, was it last meeting or two meetings? Last meeting, right? Kim had discussed this and I believe it was the consensus of the council to go ahead and offer the tier-one benefits to tier-two employees to remain competitive in hiring. Any questions about that for Kim? Okay. Item 12 is a resolution. Public improvements indicated for the North Hills at Fairhope Phase One are hereby accepted for public maintenance, subject to the bond posted. Authorizes the mayor to execute the maintenance and guarantee agreement between the City of Fairhope and North Hills. This would be... Mufer?
Yes, sir.
You want to, is that, is this just pretty simple? We're just taking over the maintenance?
Yes, sir. This is the routine acceptance of all the public improvements put in by the government.
Okay. Item 13 is a resolution that the city voted to procure an additional 2,000 gallon tank at the Fairhope docks for the diesel. And after the installation of the new tank, the city was informed there was an additional charge for removing the diesel fuel and preparing the existing tank for gas. Total cost will be ten thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents. And, you know, I've looked at this in detail and I believe it was the way that the proposal was worded. It was confusing. And so when they requested funding for the tank and the cleanout, they requested ten thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars, ninety-nine cents, too small an amount. So this will, the work's already been done. This will make the person selling the tank and the installers whole. Is that right, Kim? And you'll be able to answer any questions about that, right, if we have any? You are... Lynn, would you be able to answer questions as well? Okay. Item 14 is a resolution. Mayor Wilson is authorized to execute a contract with GeoCon Engineering and Materials Testing for Professional Engineering and Geotechnical Testing and Observation for the Church Street Utility and Drainage Improvements with a cost not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars. Michael, you want to go over this for us, please?
This is just to have a third party verifying the compaction and other geotechnical type inspections that are being done on that project as we move forward.
Oh, no. What was the last part of that?
The, just the geotechnical type things. It's third independent party to come in and do the testing for us. So compaction testing, soils, all that kind of thing.
When will that start, Michael? I know we've had some...
They've got the notice proceed now, so they're actually probably starting within the next couple of weeks, weather permitting. They're going to start down towards the plant and work their way out, so it'll be a little while before they actually get to public right-of-ways.
How far, how far down church will that go?
Delamar. It's a ways down there.
Any questions for Michael on that? Okay, hey, thank you.
I have the next one.
You got the next one, too? Who said you only had number five? Anyway, Mayor Wilson, number fifteen, authorizes Mayor Wilson to execute a contract with Volker to perform professional design engineering services for the utility easement at Coleman Lane in Sibley Creek in Spanish Fort with a not-to-exceed cost of thirteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. I'm assuming gas line?
Yes, sir. It's a gas line that goes under the creek. We had Volker go out there and take a look at it, Mr. Johnson, with me. They came up with a pretty good plan to stabilize the drainage, the banks coming into the creek, and then reinforce the pipeline itself so that if there is any flood events or anything like that, it's not going to cause that line to break.
Will you be coming back to us? You'll have to put out
Yeah, they're doing the engineering.
Design for...
They're doing the design for it.
For bid?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Then I'll have to go out for bid.
Is that going to be something that's over fifty thousand dollars?
Probably. I don't know the exact numbers yet. They're still kind of doing ballpark-type things.
Okay.
So, but yeah, that's budgeted in the twenty-one budget.
Counsel, any questions about that one? Okay, thank you. Item sixteen, that's a resolution authorizing Mayor Wilson to, for, it says authorized a contract for extension. I'm sure I authorized a contract. Just to execute a contract, maybe? Okay, that's a word missing there.
Extension.
Tripping me up a little bit. Okay. This is for professional advertising and public relations for the Community Development Department with Hummingbird in South for an additional one year with a cost not to exceed four thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars? Who would answer that? Jessica?
So this is just to continue the Fairhope Connect that goes into all of the mailers and also is at each of our locations here in the city. It's our bimonthly newsletter.
Bimonthly Fairhope Connect. Okay, very good. Any questions for Jessica on that?
The next one's me, too.
All right. Item seventeen is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for extension, number two of bid number twenty-seven dash seventeen. This says Fairhope Connect Newsletter Printing. Oh, so the first one is a design.
Design only.
Second one's for the printing.
Certainly.
With Postmark Inc. for an additional one year per the terms and conditions with an annual cost not to exceed fourteen thousand, one hundred. You know, the first one at forty-one hundred and twenty-five dollars seemed pretty cheap for that, so now I see the printing.
You know, see why I didn't sit back down? So I knew we were going to get to the second one.
Yeah.
This is something that we have done previously as well.
Any questions for Jessica on the printing? Okay, all right.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Item eighteen is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for extension number two of the bid number twenty-five dash eighteen for pest control with Red Pest Solutions for an additional one year per the terms and conditions of the original contract. If we have any questions, and I doubt we will, Richard? Does anybody have any questions for Richard concerning that right now? Okay. Item nineteen is renewing the elevator maintenance contract for a three-year period with ThyssenKrupp. This is through Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative for a total cost of eighteen thousand, nine hundred. That's for the three years, our sixty-three hundred dollars per year. Is that you, Richard?
Yes, sir.
How many elevators do they maintain for that?
Hang on. Got to pull it up.
So a little over fifteen hundred dollars per year per elevator. Yeah, that's about, that's about right. Any questions for that? You trying to think of what y'all put?
I'm trying to figure out where the four elevators are.
Parking garage.
Library, parking garage, museum, and one more is council.
Is it the rec center? Rec center, I think.
Okay, yeah, okay. Okay. Item twenty is approving emergency repairs to the roof at the rec, speaking of the rec center, at the rec center due to the damage by forces of nature, the storm of July the 12th, and the amount of eight thousand dollars, which is not budgeted. Who would that be? You, Richard?
I...
If anybody has any questions?
Pat as well.
Pat? I mean, if anybody has any questions. Does anybody have any questions? We have a need to repair the roof. Good with that?
Yep.
All right. Item twenty-one is a resolution. The City of Fairhope approves the procurement of hydrofluorosilic, fluorosilic acid, fluorine, I think, right? For the Water Department from the Water and Waste Specialties with an estimated cost of fifty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars at four dollars and eighty cents a gallon. Okay. Who would we ask about that? Michael? I'm sure we'll look. Just right off the top of your head, is that the price we've been paying? Does that go up or anything?
Yes, sir.
Same price? Okay. Okay. And then item two is a similar resolution to approve the procurement of hydrated lime and chlorine for the Water Department. Any big price increases in that?
I don't do so. I'm probably not that old, but I don't remember anything.
Any questions for Michael on that? Okay. Item twenty-three is to vote to procure a candidate image prograph TX3000 device. This is to be a three-year lease for the city IT department. So this is a printer, a cost of forty-four hundred, five dollars and eighty cents per year. Jeff?
This is for the planning and building department. They're the primary users of the plotter, then utilities are secondary users. This is just, we, our current lease is up, so we're just getting a new lease on a new machine.
Okay. Price seem reasonable to you?
Seems good to me. Just about what we've been paying.
Okay. Questions for Jeff? Or Hunter?
I miss what the budget is. We had twenty thousand, but it's a three-year contract.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Item twenty-four is a resolution. The city vote to procure the Intergov software for the Building Department, specifically designed for the online submittals, issuance, and payment of building permits and development plans from Tyler Technologies with a not-to-exceed amount of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which will be reimbursed through the CARES Act funding under remote work. Kim, remind me, you sent it to me. What's the annual maintenance cost for that?
It's just a fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand a year? Somebody from Tyler Technologies is our, they've been doing a heck of a sales job here at the City of Fairhope, haven't they?
Well, the reason that we always look to them because of the integration with Munis. So it didn't, a lot of times it doesn't make sense to go elsewhere where there's just not, they don't play together. So it's nice to have that plug and play with our Munis system. That's the reason why we usually look to them first.
Okay. Any questions about that, counsel? I think that we got briefed on that in the last work session, but the one thing that we were waiting to hear was that annual maintenance cost. Item twenty-five is a resolution. The City of Fairhope, or City Council accepts ten thousand masks donated by the Gainesville, Georgia branch of the Taiwanese Chambers of Commerce of North America for distribution to citizens in need. I just got to ask, where'd that come? Who, the mayor, did you get that?
It's from a Fairhope citizen and she reached out. They've been fundraising since March and they're donating like a million or maybe more than that. I should have wrote it down, nationwide, but this is just for Fairhope.
Yep. Okay. Any questions for that? Okay, all right. Item twenty-six is a resolution. The pay grade for the equipment operator to be revised and approved in the compensation and job classification plan is recommended by the Public Works Director, Richard Johnson. From a grade sixteen to a grade seventeen, it'll approve the updated equipment operator to job description for the same and amend the budget for the position. I believe this was discussed at the last work session, Richard?
No, sir, we have to...
It wasn't? Okay. Well, you want to brief us on that? This sounds familiar to me, so...
Well, it's a similar thing you've heard before, but a different case. Basically, the crux of the matter is, is that we have in horticulture a gardener one position and we have an operator two position. It's employed in that department. We had a gardener one who's done a good job for us that applied for and was going to be, in our mind, promoted to operator two because the operator two has more responsibility, more accountability. But in our current pay grade, a gardener one and an operator two are both grades sixteens. So here was the crux of the matter. We could promote that person, but we couldn't give them any additional compensation. So meaning they were going to make less than what the person that they were replacing, or if we hired from outside, we could pay that person more, but we can't pay our own person more. And after, because in our handbook, a lateral move, which is based upon grade, says there's no compensation change, even though in our operational scheme, a gardener one and operator two have different levels of responsibility and accountability. So we got with HR and Kim, and the elegant solution was to make operator twos a grade seventeen, so there's a distinguishing between those two. Here's the good news is every operator two in the city already is in a grade seventeen pay range, so it's budget neutral there. And the person who's being promoted will actually make less than the person who left that job, so it's actually not even budget neutral. It's less than what we have currently budgeted. So it's just, it's fixing a problem that we know that when the Auburn study gets through and we get through there, these are the kind of issues that's got to be addressed because it makes no sense that a guy that's worked for you for a year and done a good job, if you promote him to that position, you can't give him any money, but I could hire somebody who hasn't worked for the city and give them that same additional money. So it's just a housekeeping and it's just a way to encourage growth within our department.
Makes sense to me. Counsel, any questions for Richard?
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Okay. Item twenty-seven is a resolution approving the recommendation of the rec board concerning the City of Fairhope Athletic Field Rental Agreement as modified. And I believe we've discussed this several times and most recently a couple of meetings ago. I will say that there was some more requests that came from the Recreation Board, but they were really big requests and I thought that those were more suited to go in the budget. For instance, the track, the ball fields, which we probably need to vet, but I think that we need both of those, but it's not something that you just throw on the agenda, a million-dollar expense without having a lot more discussion. So I talked to Jay about this and we talked about whether or not to put all three requests on there. We thought it best just to put the one that we knew we could approve tonight and then continue discussion with the other, with the other two requests and that that would probably be more conducive to budget time. Is that right, Jay?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Not on your agenda, but talked about at the beginning of this agenda meeting was item, which I would call twenty-eight, which is authorizing and approving the Common Sense Campaign request to hold the candidate forum on Thursday, August 20th from six to eight PM in the city council chambers and that all the fees be waived, including the security, and if possible, scheduled Tuesday, August the 11th from six to eight as a backup date in case there are conflicts with the candidates that cannot be resolved. Anybody have any problem walking that on? Item twenty-nine, for the third time now, that will be the underground storage tank, removal and disposal of the hydrocarbons if necessary. And then item thirty will be the cathodic gas services that Mr. Allison briefed us on already. Any questions? Okay. Does anybody have anything else they want to talk about in the work session? All right, we're going to get a nice little break here. Let's go ahead and adjourn and I'll see everybody back here in your seat about five till six. Thank you.